Really honest, do you need a cup? You need a drink? Okay, um, once I call roll, I should be able to go get you one.
I think all I have pictures are our dogs.
I mean, I have two children, I still only have.
I don't know, I never take pictures on vacations, we like to like force ourselves. And then you can look at our phone, it's like 100 pictures of our dogs just sleeping in weird ways.
About seven o'clock, I will call to order the June 21st meeting of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Kuskudis? Mr. Stavropoulos?
Here.
Mr. Jesse? I mean Vessi.
Here.
Mr. Morgan? Ms. Vehill?
Yeah.
Mr. Kulianas?
Here.
Mr. Androtis.
All right, we have a quorum. Uh, item number two on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the May 17th meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, uh, the minutes on the April 19, 2021 meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Kulianas?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Stavropoulos?
Yes.
Ms. Vehill?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, item number three is the quasi judicial announcement and swearing of speakers, please.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, if anyone is wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or from the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn. And also keep in mind that the first two applications are quasi judicial, however, item number six, A and B, are legislative.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that brings us to item number four, application 2147, conditional use approval for the operation of a seasonal short-term rental at 4 West Orange Street in the Special Area Plans T-5D transect district. Does the staff have a presentation?
Yes, Pat McNeese, Principal Planner. And this is, um, application 2047, request for a seasonal short-term rental at 4 West Orange Street. Uh, this is located on the northwest corner of Orange Street and Alt 19. This is located in the T-5D North Pinellas Avenue transect district. As you have seen these before, you know that the transect code basically allows, uh, where it does allow short-term rentals, there are no distance requirements. Um, this is an existing single-family residence. And that's just kind of a depiction of the, uh, survey provided by the applicant. Overlaying on the aerial, you can see that the access is from alternate 19 and the parking is, is over on that side. The property fronts on Orange Street and is addressed on Orange Street. Um, with respect to your, your review criteria, again, this is in T-5D. Um, it does comply with the transect code as far as the develop, the, um, existing property and it does allow for vehicular parking sufficient to serve this use. It's in that downtown area with the various mixed uses. Um, the uses, uh, that are closest to this property include office, commercial, single-family, and multifamily residential. So it is not believed that this will impact the character of the neighborhood negatively. The, uh, this didn't come out too well, you can kind of see the yellow. Yeah, I guess you can see it, the yellow squares represent the approved short-term rentals in this area. Uh, the red square is the, um, application we're, uh, talking about right now. The blue scare, square is also a proposed short-term rental. And, uh, you'll, we'll be talking about that as our next item. Uh, and I could, should mention, these short-term rentals in this block between center and orange are in the transect code, the one north of Center Street is in residential multifamily, as is the Spring Boulevard over here. Uh, the use is consistent with the, um, comprehensive plan. And, uh, this is a contributing structure in the historic district. Um, the applicant has been, uh, uh, working on this structure. This is a 2018 Google Street View picture and this is, uh, still a work in progress, but this is what's been done on the property. Um, lot of nice restoration done on, on the wood, um, components of the structure. I've been kind of following this one. Also, um, a restoration of the, uh, site wall feature, which is a contributing feature on the property. So this is an adaptive use to a short-term rental, uh, for a historic structure um, that, that obviously has always served as a residence and, um, it's going to allow this historic structure to continue to, to serve the, the city and, um, uh, be positively, um, uplifted, I guess, in the historic district. Uh, there are no environmental resources on the site. And, um, it's thought that this project will not adversely affect property values in the area. The property's already served by the city. And, um, again, this seems to be a good use for this, this, uh, structure as far as the efficient development of the city. Uh, for one reason, as you know, uh, the transect code allows for a variety of uses, especially in T-5D district. Um, rather than a commercial use, this use for residential kind of keeps that traffic, um, uh, access and circulation down a little bit. Um, with the entrance being on North Pinellas, real close to that Orange Street, North Pinellas intersection, it seems to be a, a pretty good adaptive use for this site, rather than say, an office or a commercial. Um, staff is recommending approval, uh, with four conditions. Um, you've seen these before, again, this is already a residence, so these are the conditions, uh, that the Fire Marshal has identified for something that is existing as a residence, um, just to, to keep, um, the property safe. And of course, it's, it will be subject to all other codes, noise, um, you know, waste disposal, all those other types of codes that, uh, would apply to any property in Tarpon. And, um, this was noticed and there were no responses received to the notice. Are there any questions on this?
So, yeah, this, this obviously seems like a appropriate place for this, for a short-term rental. However, is, how many people would be allowed to stay in, in a facility that, uh, in a house that big? Is there a limit or?
There's no limit on the number of persons. Um, that could be something you could, you could recommend to the board if you wish to do that. Uh, the applicant, I'm not sure if the applicant's present, they could probably answer that. Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a, an appropriate place for a short-term rental. I would have some concerns if, if it was, you know, a quote, if it had, um, say if it was being used during, like, a spring break, because it's right across the street from the church, the Greek church, um, you know, that it, you know, that.
Yes.
That's a concern, you know?
Okay.
But obviously, I think it's a place that, if, you know, if we're going to have short-term rentals, I, I can't see where you would find any better of a location for it. But that would be a concern, so.
Is, in your review, you said space for two cars, is that, that kind of the limit of it, or is there room for more?
I believe there is room for more, um, especially if you're parking one behind the other, probably at least, um, three or four cars.
Yeah, I.
Of course, there is on-street parking on Orange Street, um, so that is another factor.
That was just my, my question. I can't read the actual measurements, if there are any, on the width and, uh, length of the, uh, concrete pad there. Uh, that would be a concern as to how many families would, uh, rent that all at once and where they would park, because it doesn't seem like, uh, would be able to accommodate all the cars. And as I'm looking at, uh, a frontal picture here of the, the home, the first parking space starts to the left of the property because of the corner.
It looks like that's about 30 feet, probably, so three cars probably side by side.
You can't park at the corner, so they have to push it up, uh, it's X amount of feet from any corner, uh, any, an intersection, rather.
Right, yeah.
That would just be my concern.
How, how many bedrooms? I didn't see that anywhere.
Uh, that was not provided with the application.
Any other questions for staff?
I have one. It just follows on the heel, so is there a top limit to how many persons would be allowed to stay in this and/or any other short-term rental application? Is there a guideline established for these single-family residences?
Uh, the city of Tarpon does not have a guideline for that. We have, in the past, looked at Pinellas County Code, that does have guidelines for that. Um, and, uh, you might remember, um, in the past, there were short-term rentals proposed up at Anclote Isles. At that, in that item, we looked at the county code and looked at conditioning those. Those were ultimately denied by the Board of Commissioners. We have looked at those as conditions, but, um, that was the only, you know, only place we really, really looked at it. Uh, that was obviously a very residential area, very well-established residential area. Um, so, uh, this area, that's kind of a mix.
The answer is no, there's no limit to how many people can stay there.
Yeah, there's nothing in the code. But like I say, it doesn't mean you can't recommend to the board that, that something be established um, or some condition to try to address that.
And I'm going to ask another question that really is more a, a building code question. Other than the requirements put forth by the Fire Marshal, which we would read as a smoke detector here and a smoke detector there, which in fact were the basic requirements for any single-family residence, period, other than the requirement for a fire extinguisher, there are no additional, um, safety features that are requested for, um, a transient, short-term rental. So here's my question again, is that are there, other than just the smoke detector requirements, are there no additional city code rules, ordinances that hold those owners to a higher standard of safety within these what were single-family residences, other than smoke detectors in every room, which is already the, the minimum requirement in our code?
The building code, under the building code and the fire code, the, uh, the occupancy has not changed for their review purposes, so they can't require more stringent requirements. We had another one that you reviewed, I believe at your last meeting or before, that was a change. It was an office, it's actually right next door to this one. And it was proposing a short-term rental. In that case, Fire Marshal, building official was able to say, that's a change in occupancy. I go to this code and you, you've got to do these things. In this case, um, single-family residence is kind of what it's still being used for and it doesn't trigger their, trigger their change in occupancy. So they gave us some, you know, these are their recommended conditions to at least try to, um, put some safety requirements on as conditions.
Thank you, and I'm not quite done, but, and I, I suspected that was the answer to that. So just to make sure that I understand completely, in, in this app, in the two applications that we have and the three that we've approved, so now we've got this cluster of five, perhaps six, single-family residences that are lovely, and this is a great use, I would agree, but we're creating a cluster of older homes that were built and designed for single-family residences that now can hold, and I'm going to ask one question right in here, um, what's the minimum for the short-term rental? Is that one day, two days, or three days? Or a week?
There's no minimum, if it's, yeah.
Perfect, okay, so no minimum, so no minimum stay, no maximum amount of people that can stay in it. And yet we have absolutely no safety requirements other than a smoke detector at all. And that's not so much a question, I just want to make sure that I'm clear that I understand. So in effect, if, let's say, for example, we were to go stay at a motel down on the beach, there would be a door that has an exit sign above it, it would have a safety release, there would be other things, where in effect, giving approval for owners to, under the guise of single-family residents, turn these into micro hotels, which again is a fabulous use, preserve the structure, but yet without any of the burden of the safety that all of the other hotels and motels are forced to go under, whether those be sprinklers or adequate parking, or ADA egress, or waste and disposal. I'll end with that, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Um, yes, I mean, this is obviously, um, distinguished from a hotel, which is, which is individual rooms rented by unrelated people. So, um, this, this is, uh, being, uh, being proposed to be approved as, as one family renting the house. So other than your standard building codes on a single family for the number of, you know, exits, more than one exit, or whatever, whatever they are, obviously building code, um, details I'm not prepared to address, but those standard, um, items of any single-family home would apply to this, this structure. But, um, yeah, this is for rental by one family.
So the answer is, yes, there, the, we, we don't have any, anything additional at all?
No. That's correct, I mean.
Oh, thank you.
Did you say that we normally will follow the Pinellas County standards?
Uh, they, that's, we did not propose those as conditions. Um, I can, uh, maybe pull up, um, what some of those might be, if you want to consider those.
I got them pulled up, so that's why I was just wondering.
Okay.
And if I might interject, um, you know, I, I appreciate your line of questioning and keep in mind, this is a quasi judicial proceeding for a conditional use permit with specific criteria. What it sounds like to me, and you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, is that you are seeking maybe to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that this section of code be looked at and maybe make a recommendation to change this section of code in order to include some of those provisions, um, if you can, subject to preemption with the statute that regulates short-term rentals. If that is the case, might I suggest that if the board has a consensus and would like to do so, have this as a topic on a future agenda, um, to where you guys can come together and talk about it and maybe make a proposed recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to change the city's code. But as for this specific application for the special conditions and the special use permit, those types of things, unless you can find where they fall within these criteria, I don't believe are relevant to the application before you.
Thank you. But I politely disagree, I think they're extremely relevant to this conversation, um, if I might politely say so. And so I was just asking direct questions about what we are approving and have already approved, as it appears that we're going to be under a tsunami of such approvals. So, thank you, Patricia McNeese, you had answered my questions.
You're welcome.
Since we, you, you said that we could possibly make a recommendation for the maximum amount of people that could spend the night there? Did you, did you say that?
I would, um, maybe Erica can chime in, but you can circle, certainly, uh, recommend conditions to the board. If, if you want to, and then the board could do what they want to with those recommendations.
And since we don't know how many bedrooms there are, could we make a recommendation that no more than two people per bedroom?
I could read you what the Pinellas County.
Because I think that addresses some of, of Mr. Vessi's concern about safety. You know, if, if there's 20 people spending the night there, it's, it's a lot.
I could read you what the Pinellas County standard is, if you'd like me to.
Yes, yes, please.
It says, maximum occupancy, maximum occupancy shall be no more than two persons per bedroom plus two persons in one common area, not to exceed more than 10 persons total per unit, whichever is less.
That's great.
So if that's a standard that, I think that's not a bad standard.
I think it's a great standard.
Is it, is it within our purview to recommend that condition?
Um, you can certainly recommend the condition, what I'm trying to look up right now is that the state actually has a statute that preempts local governments from regulating short-term rentals and, um, I don't specifically think it's been amended to include occupancy. I know at one point it did and that's been retracted, I believe in 2011. So I'm just trying to double-check that that's something that would not otherwise be preempted to the state. My initial thinking is it's not and you can certainly make that recommendation. Um, but I'm, I just want to double-check on that.
Well, we can, we can take that up a little further in, in our discussion after we have public comment, if there is any. But are there more questions for the staff before we go to, uh, allowing, I don't know if the applicant's here, but allowing the applicant to make their comments if they're here? Is the applicant present? And would they like to make comment? No. Okay, are there any members of the public that would like to make comment? Any, anybody online?
We're no longer online.
Oh, that's right, we're, we're not doing that anymore.
I like the.
Okay, so that brings us right back where we, where we were a minute ago. I mean, I'd, if, I, I would like to see a condition like, like that brought up and that seems a good source for one, if we're going to put one to, to match up with what Pinellas County is already doing.
Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion, if you're ready.
But before, so I would just like to state that the preemption, um, does state that, uh, it does not include occupancy, so you can certainly make the condition with regard to occupancy that has been, uh, either, either repealed or was not, uh, touched by the Florida Legislature.
Thank you. I would like to motion that application number 21 dash 47 for conditional use is approved as submitted with the additional condition that the Board of Commissioners consider adopting the Pinellas County rules for occupancy, excuse me, occupancy of two persons per bedroom plus two in an additional space, not to exceed 10 persons per unit.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kulianas?
Yes.
Ms. Vehill?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Stavropoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Can I ask who the second was on that one?
Uh, it was that gentleman at the second.
Kulianas, were you the second?
Oh, yes, I seconded, yes.
All right, that brings us to item number five, application 2148. Same deal, different place, basically, uh, 133 North Pinellas Avenue, Special Area Plan T-5D transect district. Do we have a staff presentation?
Okay, this one is the same applicant, and this is located at 133 North Pinellas. This is on the corner of Center, West Center Street and North Pinellas. This is a little bit bigger lot, also in the T5D district. This shows a little bit of an overlay of the survey, and you can see this property has access and parking off of Center Street while it, the property fronts on North Pinellas. Again, this is in the T5D district, it appears to meet the standards of that district, and it also has a parking pad type configuration that allows for sufficient parking under our code. And again, this is in that mixed-use downtown area, and of course it fronts on 118, which makes it a little less desirable in, in some instances for a regular single-family. So we're talking about this one up here on the corner, and this one down here is the one you just recommended approval on. This is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, this is another contributing structure in the historic district. The applicant is not proposing any changes, this is just to look at the structure from a Google Street View photo. There are no changes proposed to the exterior, and no environmental resources on the site. Again, this is a mixed area, this one's a little bit more, right across the street from commercial, both to the north and to the east, so it's a little bit more in a commercial area or near it. This is, property is served by facilities, and again, this seems to make sense as far as where these short-term rentals might be proposed. We have proposed, recommended approval with the same proposed conditions on this one. There were no responses received to the notices for this application. Are there any questions on this one? Again, it does have at least two, and I think I'd better do a little bit, better job in the future of actually scoping out how many vehicles can fit. But yeah, it does have at least two. I think this one probably has a little more room than the one you just looked at, but I'll be sure and do that in the future. And, and I understand, even though the code is two for a single-family, this use obviously may at times generate more, more vehicles.
So you typically have to have like a 10-by-20 pad and fit one vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
If that's not 20 feet across, you cannot fit two vehicles in there.
Right, so they'd have to be, one in front of the other is also considered, and I forget how deep this is, but, but you know, for a single-family, we can-
This, this does have dimensions, but it's the house dimensions.
Right.
Which parallel the, the driveway.
Right.
I mean, I could figure that one out.
And I just looked, I don't have a scaled survey of either of these.
Doesn't tell you the width.
Yeah. So we'll be sure.
Oh, yes, wait a minute, it does. Yeah, it's not big enough. It's only for one vehicle. It looks pretty small. It's eight, 8.3 plus 3.3, that's not enough.
It, it appears that because of the way the fences align, they're parking a vehicle on, on the yard beyond that covered concrete driveway.
Well, yeah, yeah, if there's access to it.
All right, if there's no further questions for staff.
Pat? I can't tell from this overhead, is there a house directly behind that house, or is that an empty lot? Behind it?
Um.
Lot.
There is a house behind it, let me go back a little bit.
It says lot, lot number three.
So, oh, you mean this?
Yeah, right there, yeah.
This is, I believe this is the office used, there is a structure towards the front of it. This is a very large, well, it's a relatively large property for downtown, but there are, yeah, there's, the principal structure is right up here on Orange Street. I don't know, there may be accessory structures back there, but it's all one property.
All part of the same.
And there's, there's, there's no street parking on this street?
On Center Street? I'm, I don't know if parking's prohibited on Center Street.
You can't park on Center Street?
Okay.
Yeah, so there's-
I mean-
A lot of little questions that I have pertaining to parking and it, being able to accommodate the people that are renting this.
Yeah, and this does show a covered concrete, um, structure that was assumed to be for vehicles, so that was part of what we considered for parking for two vehicles.
If I may, I, I don't have a, an additional question, but I certainly would like to expand on this discussion of parking that always seems to rise up when we review these at the time of the discussion after a motion is made, if all that makes sense. 'Cause we can't discuss now, but I'd sure like to delve into this a little bit deeper.
Maybe the staff might possibly accommodate us by putting dimensions on driveways, especially in this, the old district, because they weren't meant to have vehicular parking.
Well, and in this particular case, I would wonder, 'cause for a second vehicle to park here, it would have to be parking on what, what appears not to be concrete, what appears to me to be the yard.
And of course, we don't want our neighbors parking on their yard, can't do it in my neighborhood. Now, I'm delving into discussion, but I think that it's important that we kinda crack the top on this and really flesh it out.
Definitely a case where it would be helpful if the applicant was here to address these points. I mean, isn't the applicant usually expected to be here?
Yes, I cannot tell you either. Abs, I did expect the applicant to be here for these. We didn't.
So if, if we wanted to defer this item for the applicant to be present and answer some more questions, that would be a reasonable request?
Usually requests to continue are at the discretion of the applicant, not the Board, and that is because it would be a due process issue. If they choose not to show up and not to have a voice in their application other than what they've submitted to the city in written form, that's the evidence that they choose to submit. The onus is on them, and the burden is on them to provide the requisite information in order for you to make a determination. If the evidence as presented does not conform with the criteria that's set forth in your code to allow you by law to approve the permit, then, the conditional use permit, then you're required to deny it. Well, it might be nice to have the applicant here and, and request that, if they choose not to show, that's, that's unfortunately their decision.
It does say on these papers that it, the property conforms to the transit district standards and can accommodate the required two-vehicle parking. So, I mean, that had to have been checked out.
Yes, um, so there's a, there's a gravel parking pad, and there is a covered structure there. It was assumed that those could be, and the gravel pad is probably represented as yard on this, on this survey. It was assumed that the covered concrete could be parked under, now it's pretty low.
So where would that-
You know, I didn't go out and measure it.
Well, it's, it's not indicated on here, where would it be located?
Um, if you look at the survey in your package, is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at the survey right now.
Yeah, there's, um, the item labeled as covered concrete.
Oh.
And then you'll see a fence line-
Yeah.
-to the, to the west and to the south, and I can show you on the powerpoint. That's actually gravel, and it looks like people parked there.
Oh, to the west of the concrete slab?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So this, this cannot be tabled to a-
So it's over in this area here on the slab.
So. I gotcha. Okay, it's adjacent to the, to the concrete pad. Yeah, I'm just trying to think logistically, you know, if it's a two-story, I'm assuming it's three bedrooms all upstairs. So if you have three times two people per room, that's, that's a total of three vehicles. You can only fit one vehicle in the driveway, the other two would have to park in the adjacent lot. That's just my concern.
And the, the question that comes to mind regarding the gravel drive area is, is it a legally permitted gravel drive area? I know at my place of business, I can't just go put gravel on the ground and start parking there, I'm expected to get permits and do it properly, yeah.
Yeah. Six inches near the curb.
Yeah.
Near the, on the right way.
Yeah.
And it's gotta be compacted.
Can this be tabled?
According to your rules of procedure, you do not have the ability to table this to the next meeting. The only time you have the ability to continue the public hearing is if it cannot be concluded at the meeting scheduled, usually that's due to time, you would continue it to, due to a date certain, or if the applicant has elected to defer their item either prior to the meeting, or there's been a determination by the applicant based on concession of the Board that they would continue it to a future meeting. It's a procedural, due process, air, air, excuse me, a procedural, due process issue, and so this Board cannot just go ahead and continue an application.
Well, this is, to me, this is lacking information, not enough pertinent information for us to assess this, or, or to pass any conclusions.
And as I stated before, and I do in every quasi-judicial, every quasi-judicial announcement, if the evidence that's presented at the hearing does not fit to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then by law, you're required to deny the application. So if, if you do not feel that the evidence that has been presented amounts to competent substantial evidence enough to support all of the criteria to grant the conditional use permit, then you're required by law to deny the conditional use permit.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, if we're ready.
Did we go to public comment?
No, but I was trying to move it along.
Do we have any public comment?
Except this is a, a quasi-judicial hearing, we need to make sure for the record that we, we at least go to public comment, whether or not there's comment or not.
Are there any members of the public here wishing to comment? Seeing none.
I'd like to motion that application 21-48 for conditional use is not approved as submitted.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Corleones?
Yes.
Ms. Vehill?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Uh, no.
Mr. Seaman?
Now, wait. Point of, point of clarity here, voting yes on a no motion is no, correct?
Oh, is no.
Yes, if you vote yes, you're voting to deny the application.
Yes, sorry, I have to reverse my-
Yes.
Sorry about that.
I was like, you can't change a man's word.
Did, we, we missed our opportunity for discussion, did we not? I know that there was a lot of discussion, but from the motion to the vote, it's been voted, so I was, uh, maybe we could have a make-up discussion if the voting is-
Procedurally, I don't-
Well, procedurally, the vote's been had and everything's been taken care of. I, I would say, if your discussion is pertinent to that application, then the time for that discussion is over. If your discussion is with regard to general terms, then that, I defer to the chairman as to whether or not that discussion will be had today, or if that needs to be noticed for a future meeting.
Chairperson, would you entertain discussion for general terms?
I think it's appropriate, yeah.
If I may, I'd like to introduce a general term discussion in regards to short-term rental and parking requirements. Only coincidentally that it is an issue on every one that we have seen to date, that we have ever so slightly brought up previously, but have just kinda thought, oh, they must have already thought about that. It appears that either the applicants or our staff that works very, very hard, that's just too fine a detail. And so this is less discussion, and kinda just my thought on it is that we are the planning board, that we plan for the future. That's our job, is to look to what the decisions we make might have implications in the future for the community, and parking is absolutely one of those that we might have been remiss on in the past, that maybe we should pay more attention to now, such as the example that we just solidified, which is up to 10 persons can stay in any one of these homes, which means they can put 10 in it every night, 30 nights a week, or, excuse me, 30 nights a month. By law, they can have 10 all the time. That's four or five cars all the time, totally legal. Where are these folks gonna park? We know that there's not adequate parking there, so that means that we're creating, by passing some of these, a situation in the future that's gonna be uncomfortable for the owners, the guests, and, and our enforcement of that.
It, I mean, it, it strikes me that it goes beyond the parking even there, and, and maybe looking at the Pinellas standards is a good starting point, but there's, there's a lot of little issues that come up frequently in these things, and it seems to me it would be appropriate for us to have, for the city to have a standard that, you know, you check off these items, you have three parking spaces, or, or whatever is appropriate for, you know, for a facility that can hold-
10 people.
10 people, or, or whatever, and these are the minimum standards, and, and everybody has to meet them. And, and safety can be a part of that, too, and, and occupancy certainly is a part of that, so.
Might I make a suggestion that it sounds like there's a majority, or at least a large consensus of the Board, that would like to have an in-depth discussion on this, and maybe make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners to change the ordinance to include these types of things? If I could make a suggestion that this be put on a future agenda as a discussion item, so that you all can prepare and kinda bring your ideas, and then make a formal recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for them to entertain a change to that ordinance?
That seems to be an excellent idea. So Chairperson, I'd like to request that this topic become an official agenda item at the next available meeting where there's time available.
Yes, I, I would agree, as soon as, soon as we can take it up, if, if our agenda is just slammed, maybe we need to move it one meeting, but as soon as possible.
Okay, we can do that.
All right, that brings us to item number six, application 21-70, amending the city's special area plan and SMART code. I'm sure the staff has a presentation for us.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ally Keen, I'm the Senior Planner with Planning and Zoning Department. I don't think I've met you guys in person yet, so I'm happy to be here tonight to go over our proposed amendments. As a quick refresher, the special area plan was a plan that was developed for the SpongeDocks in the community redevelopment area. I don't think I've met you guys in person yet, so I'm happy to be here tonight to go over our proposed amendments. As a quick refresher, the special area plan was a plan that was developed for the SpongeDocks and the community redevelopment area. It was first adopted back in 2011. This plan is a policy document, and it essentially provided the basis for amending the countywide plan map in order to allow for mixed-use redevelopment opportunities within the boundary. There is a companion document to the special area plan, and that is the Transit-Based Infill Redevelopment Plan, which is more commonly referred to as the SMART code. And the SMART code is the day-to-day regulating plan for the property within the same boundary as the special area plan. The special area plan divides the boundary into 10 different character districts. That's the map that's on the right side of the screen. The character districts essentially provide the general use allowances, as well as set your maximum density and intensity allowances within each district. The SMART code further divides down the character districts into various transit zones, which is the map on the right side of the screen. The transit zones operate more so like a traditional zoning district in that they have the more dimensional and development criteria for developing the properties. One thing to note about the character districts, they can include more than one transit zone and vice versa. Over the last 10 years, this has come before the boards for some updates and amendments, and that's what we're here today for. The first item to consider are some amendments to the special area plan. These are generally fairly minor. The first is to update text and the map for the coastal high hazard area, and I'll go over that in just a minute. And then the second is, we've just noticed some updates that we needed for references, numbering, as well as some corrections or Scrivener's errors in the code, so that we're taking care of at the same time. There is a map in the special area plan that shows the coastal high hazard area. It was the intention in the special area plan to update this map as the boundary of that hazard area changed over time. That map has not been updated, so this is what we're proposing to amend today, and that is to reflect the current boundary of the coastal high hazard area. We're also proposing some additional language within this section that addresses density limitations for properties that are now located in the coastal high hazard area, where they were not located in it previously. The purpose of this map and the code is when the special area plan was adopted, there were some increases in density. Properties within the coastal high hazard area are not able to have increases in density, so this map just documents those properties and limits them to their previous density The SMART code, again, we have some proposed amendments to that as well, and I'll go through each one. The first is probably the more significant amendment, and this is adding a new section to the SMART code, the Elevated Structures Design Guidelines. As you saw on the coastal hazard map, there are several properties located within that hazard area, as well as properties that are then designated floodplain. This ultimately can result in elevating buildings in order to have flood protection. This has an unintended and unintentional consequence to the street level when buildings are higher than the designated or desired street level. So, these guidelines are intended to recognize the importance of protecting buildings from flood events, while also understanding the importance of functionality, the pedestrian experience, and sustaining a vibrant and walkable neighborhood. These guidelines would be applicable to all non-residential developments that are proposed to be elevated for the purpose of flood protection. The section establishes four different urban design principles, which are listed here on the screen. Those include visual connectivity in the active street frontage, facade articulation, inviting access, and neighborhood character. And basically, the idea behind these guidelines is that a proposed development that has to elevate a structure would have to meet the overall intent of each of these principles. We have provided some possible strategies to meeting that intent within each section of this code, but they're not all-inclusive, so we wanted to leave the door open if a developer potentially had a more creative solution to address the street level and address the impacts of an elevated structure. Some of the other proposed amendments, the next one is in regards to single-family detached housing currently. Single-family is only permitted by right in the T4D district. It is a conditional use in the other T4 zones. We're proposing that single-family be permitted use by right in all T4 districts. This is really directly related to the past proposals that we've received over several years. We've had single-family housing proposed in these other transit zones, and they've generally been approved. So, this is just to keep up with that trend. The next amendment is to Table 5A. That's the code summary table. We have noticed that there are some inconsistencies between the SMART code in this table and the special area plan allowances in regards to density and intensity. Specifically, in the special area plan, within some of the character districts, there's some special density and intensity allowances, or boosts or increases. Those special allowances are not reflected in the SMART code. So, this proposed change just makes references to that and just makes it consistent between the two plans. This change does not increase any density that wasn't previously allowed. All it does is just clearly connect the two documents. And then the last amendment is just updating the coastal high hazard area map within the special area plan and the SMART code. And with that, we would recommend approval of both of these ordinances, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question of Attorney Aguero.
Yes.
I own a piece of property that's in this, on this map in orange, and does that preclude me from voting on this?
No. The reason being is that there are many, many, many properties that are included on this map, and the ratio is so big that you do not have a conflict.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, and I've already forgotten your name.
Ally.
Ally?
Yes.
Nice to meet you, Ally.
Nice to meet you.
Ally, on... I don't know if we've covered both ordinances, but I have a question in regards to the dash-10 ordinance. Did we cover that yet?
Yes, I kind of talked about all of them, but that's for the SMART code, correct?
You were machine-gunning pretty fast there. Okay, so, I'm going to just... The actual ordinance itself, and it would be whereas, number four, whereas, comma, "single-family homes should be identified as permitted use in certain transit zones, comma, apostrophe, and." My question is, single-family homes weren't already approved within that transit zone? And what are the implications of us approving or recommending approval of adding single-family homes to this particular transit zone?
Sure. So, single-family home, detached homes, were previously conditional uses, and that was within the... I'll turn it back to the... Within the T4A, B, and C zone, they were conditional use. So, that required them to go through a process. It would come before you, as well as the Board of Commissioners, for approval. They were only permitted by right within the T4D district. So, this proposal is just to, instead of making them conditional, make them permitted by right. And like I said, we looked at this and decided this was probably an avenue to go through because, over the past several years, these applications are coming before the boards, and they're ultimately getting approved. So, it's showing kind of the trend and the desire.
Okay. So, if I may, at some point, someone decided that it was a really good idea, that they were a conditional use and were not a standard use. So, other than it's convenient, what are the good reasons for us changing this conditional use that, at some point, again, a group of people thought about and really didn't want to include it? What conditions have changed? Or are we simply making it easier for a particular group or owners to just not have to go through that conditional use process? Why should we be doing this?
Yeah, I think that's a really great question. So, again, you know, this plan, the special area plan and the SMART code were adopted 10 years ago. At that time, there was a thought about how is it going to redevelop in the future, this area of downtown, some of the nearby residential neighborhoods? How are they going to develop? So, at that time, it was intended that, yes, you're still going to have some single-family development. It's already there. Yes, you may have some more single-family development in that area, but at the time, they believed that maybe it would be more so, you know, duplexes, triplexes, a little more dense development. What we're seeing is that that's not what's happening. We're getting more of these small infill lots, or more, you know, suitable for the single-family home, and that's the desire and the trend of how development's going. So, we're just trying to react to both what we're seeing, and then also the overall makeup of the neighborhood.
I understand that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question on the densities and intensities. The SMART code is the document that's being changed, and it's being changed strictly just to match with the special area plan? And there are no density changes other than things that were already set forth in the special area plan, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Any other questions for staff?
I just have one question. The T4D section that's located down at the southern southeastern part of Safford Avenue, that's just pertaining to that single row of lots, of empty lots. Is that correct?
So, the T4D district has that... The east side of Safford, kind of the southern end of the...
Yeah, the east side, correct.
Yes, and then there's also some T4D on the other side.
On the west side.
Yes.
I see that.
So, that area, single-family, is already permitted by right. The areas that are going to change, where it's going from conditional to permitted, are all the other T4 zones. So, it's going to be T4C, T4A, and T4B. And those are kind of the various shades of yellow.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I can see there, most of those are tiny lots. So, without people combining lots, you really wouldn't want them doing multifamily development. I don't think there's just not room on the parcels as they're already existing.
And just a couple off of that discussion. Although single-family would now be potentially a use permitted by right, it's all the other allowed uses that were initially thought, will still be allowed, you know, by right or conditional how they are. So, that's the only particular use that's changing.
Any other questions for staff? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Approach the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Barbara Adler. I live at 159 Athenian Way. And I can't tell from the information what are the streets that are impacted by what you're proposing. I don't know exactly where those districts are.
Answer her question, or... Yeah, go ahead. Okay. Let's see if I can... I apologize, this map is very small to see on here. I'm going to try to do my best to do the highlighting here, if I can even start this. Oh, it's the bottom. There we go. Okay, so, right now, and the single-family change, okay. So, right now, this area here, it's kind of the lighter yellow, and this area over here is where it's permitted by right currently. Where we're proposing changes are in these areas, which are like the darker yellows up here.
Can you tell me what those streets are?
Um, yes. So, generally, Hibiscus to Safford, east to west, or west to east, and then Center Street to the north, Cedar Street, is the larger area. Oh, here, she's got a bigger map. Oh, it doesn't have all the streets. It might be easier if I show you this map, I think. If that's okay, are we able to do that?
Sure. Let me put some anywhere, but... No, I just have a map. So, anything that has a T4, some T4, can use a kind of complex.
Well, yes, you do, I have the street names.
Yeah, there's only a few street names here, but so generally, this area, and here, and here, all kind of the outskirts. Okay.
Thank you. That's what I needed.
Are there any other members of the publish... of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public input. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion we adopt the special area plan and SMART code updates.
We just were presenting the first...
We did both together.
Okay. There need to be two separate motions, but you can, since all the information was the same, you can just do them successively. So, one needs to be done, and then we'll present the second.
Okay, so, we need a motion first for the special area plan.
Correct.
I make a motion we adopt the special area plan as presented.
And just for clarification, that would be ordinance 2021-09.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corleanos?
Yes.
Ms. Vehill?
Yes.
Mr. Vesey?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right. Now, can I have a motion to approve the SMART code updates?
I make a motion we approve the... approve and adopt the SMART code updates as presented.
And for clarification, that's ordinance 2021-10.
I second the motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corleanos?
Yes.
Ms. Vehill?
Yes.
Mr. Vesey?
Yes.
Mr. Servopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to item seven of our agenda. Staff has a presentation on a discussion item, Connect Tarpon Springs Online Community Engagement.
And staff is asking that we can defer that discussion. We have additional coordination with the city attorney before we can do that, so we'll bring it back to your next meeting.
All right. Then, item number eight, do we have any other staff comments?
No.
Item number nine, do we have board comments? Item number 10, we stand adjourned.